Pearl Harbor, not too far away. And she knows that he is in the thick of it because that last dinghy that he caught back to his ship, the Arizona, was where he spent the night instead of spending the night in town with her. So she wanted to make sure that we always knew who we were truly honoring and who was really there. And she never told anybody his name to the day she died. She felt that was part of honoring him and his memory. But sometimes we forget and it takes a story from someone who's there to help us remember and understand these events. So I'd like to read the proclamation for Pearl Harbor. Proclamation declaring December 7th, 2021 as Pearl Harbor Day. Whereas on December 7th, 1941, the Empire of Japan suddenly attacked the Pacific Fleet of the United States of America while at Pearl Harbor in the United States territory of Hawaii. And whereas this surprise attack resulted in more than 2,350 deaths, 1,178 wounded, and brought devastation to the United States Pacific Fleet and its armed forces. And whereas December 7th, 1941, a date that will live, that forever lives in infamy, brought the United States out of isolation and into the Second World War to support the Allies, who had been fighting a bitter war in Europe for the two previous years. And whereas this unprovoked attack kindled the righteous fury of the United States of America, thus awakening the sleeping giant to become the arsenal of democracy for the cause of freedom. And whereas through the untold measure paid in precious lives, the United States ultimately won the Titanic struggle and achieved a final victory. And whereas the number of military service personnel who survived the surprise attack on that day is quickly declining as years pass. And whereas today, a new generation of brave men and women in uniforms stand ready to oppose any threat to our nation and the civilized world. Now therefore, the City of Fountain City Council hereby proclaims December 7th, 2021 as Pearl Harbor Day in Fountain, Colorado, and urges all citizens to set aside time that day to reflect on the bitter lessons learned, to honor the profound bravery of all those who served, and to pay special tribute to those who gave their last full measure of devotion on that fateful day 80 years ago. Done this 14th day of December, 2021. Read that into the record? Do we need a motion, Sylvia?
No, no.
No motion because we're not in the meeting. Okay. So all agreed? Thank you very much. Okay, that puts us almost to the time for Mr. Rick. Are you ready for your swearing in? All right.
If you listen to your... I... President, hand the key to the room. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Gordon Rick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
State of Colorado.
And of the state of Colorado.
Fountain City Charter.
The Fountain City Charter.
And City of Fountain ordinances and codes.
And City of Fountain ordinances and codes.
I will faithfully perform my duties.
I will faithfully perform my duties.
In the office of Ward One, Councilman.
In the office of Ward One, Councilman.
Down in Colorado.
Down in Colorado.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, if I get a picture with the family?
You got 20 minutes to do it. Whatever you want. Melvin, excuse me. Melvin, did you want to say something?
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to mention one thing. I guess I'm probably the only man here, or only person here, that remembers Pearl Harbor. I was nine years old, and I can remember sitting around a stoke down in Guadalupe, Colorado. I was born and raised in Colorado, down in Guadalupe. And we was listening on the radio, the news of Pearl Harbor. And so I just like to say, I missed it by 10 years, but I was just fine for Korea. Anyway, I salute the veterans that served. Thank you.
Thank you, Melvin. All right. So that is all the proclamations. We're done until 6 o'clock. Break till 6:00. And there might be some Girl Scouts coming in. So if we see them come in, I feel like I'm... Somebody's mic isn't... Somebody's... Now I can hear myself, and my mic's off. Yeah.
Mayor, I'm going to address council just real quickly on the things that I put there in front of you. Just wanted you all to know that there is a list of the boards and commissions that are associated with the city, but not as your official... Some of them are your official duties as an elected official. These are the current positions that are held. Some of them show vacant. Typically, we would do this on the first meeting after swearing in the new members. But Mayor Thompson had thought that it would probably be a better idea if I gave you guys the list and gave you a little time to look it up, try and figure out if it's going to best fit your schedule, if there's something that you're interested in being on, then we can have it as an agenda item at the next meeting. So just take that with you if you have any questions between now and the next meeting, which by the way, is in one week instead of two weeks. Feel free to send me an email if you have any questions. I'll do the best I can to find answers for you on each of these boards. And then if you decide that you want to serve on one of those, please be prepared at the next meeting. That's all.
It'll make sense later. Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Okay. Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Okay. All right. So that is all the proclamations. We're done until 6:00. Break till 6:00. And there might be some Girl Scouts coming in. So if we see them come in, I feel like I'm... Somebody's mic isn't... Somebody's... Now I can hear myself, and my mic's off. Yeah.
Mayor, I'm going to address council just real quickly on the things that I put there in front of you. Just wanted you all to know that there is a list of the boards and commissions that are associated with the city, but not as your official... Some of them are your official duties as an elected official. These are the current positions that are held. Some of them show vacant. Typically, we would do this on the first meeting after swearing in the new members. But Mayor Thompson had thought that it would probably be a better idea if I gave you guys the list and gave you a little time to look it up, try and figure out if it's going to best fit your schedule, if there's something that you're interested in being on, then we can have it as an agenda item at the next meeting. So just take that with you if you have any questions between now and the next meeting, which by the way, is in one week instead of two weeks. Feel free to send me an email if you have any questions. I'll do the best I can to find answers for you on each of these boards. And then if you decide that you want to serve on one of those, please be prepared at the next meeting. That's all.
It'll make sense later. Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick. I couldn't find a lopper cord.
What are you doing, Santa?
You don't know.
Can I turn this off for a few minutes? Or... Do you mind if I turn it off for a few minutes?
Very quick.[966.43]
Okay, it is six o'clock, so we will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Guess I'm supposed to do that. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I noticed the Girl Scouts troop is not here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sylvia?
Mayor Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Rick.
Here.
Councilmember Hinton.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Estes.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
All seven members present.
Thank you. Okay, we don't have any boards or commission or committees appointments tonight, so the next item is Item Five, City Council Agenda Request. So this is the time that we're going to be using that if you have anything that you would like to request for future consideration to be on the agenda, a resolution or anything. This is the time that you would request that. If you have reports of things that you have done on behalf of the city, we're going to save those to Item Ten and move those down to Ex officio Reports. So does anybody, we'll start down with Councilmember Duncan. Do you have any requests for items to be on any future agendas?
No.
Mr. Applegate?
Nothing.
No? Okay. All right, no requests for anything for the future agenda?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I have two requests.
Okay, thank you.
For future agendas, I would request that we schedule a time to discuss our meeting's start times, the 5:30 versus the 6 o'clock. I'd like to have a discussion about that to see whether we want to continue alternating or whether we want to just set one time. Also, I would like to schedule some time to talk about our policies and procedures for appointing members to external boards and commissions. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Just as a note, the meetings do not begin at 5:30. I just want to make sure that's clarified for anybody in the audience. The reason we have an informal meeting at 5:30 is for resolutions or any ceremonial recognitions. So, okay. All righty, because the advertised time for the meeting to begin is 6 o'clock. Okay, with that, we will move on to Item Six, which is public to be heard. I do have one card. If there's anybody else that has anything that they'd like to turn a card in for, if you could turn it into the city clerk. Otherwise, I will go through the cards first, and then if there's anybody else at the end, we'll allow a little bit of time for that. So we're going to continue with the three-minute comment period out of respect for council and the other than the audience. So Sylvia will be starting the three-minute clock, and we do ask that you state your name for the record and if you're a Fountain resident or not. So I do have one card from Fran Carrick.
Hi, good evening and congratulations, Sharon. My name is Fran Carrick, and I live at 10755 Shumway Road. Last night, it was my pleasure to listen to our city engineer apply for a position on the seat of City of Colorado Springs Council. And I was pleased that she showed such enthusiasm and passion to be on that council while working for the City of Fountain. Her expression of being a five-year, I'm sorry, five-generation resident of Colorado. She knew about the Banning Lewis Ranch. She drove cattle from there to the west side of Colorado Springs. She expressed her desire to be able to help the City of Colorado Springs enhance the entryway to Colorado Springs by improving the, oh, the fire stack there. I'm sorry, I've forgotten the name of it. She also expressed her desire to be able to enhance the West Side Generational Center, and she expressed her interest in improving their park and rec. As much as I appreciated her interest in helping Colorado Springs, that's what I would like for Fountain. And the perception that she works for the City of Fountain and wants to be on the City of Colorado Springs Council disturbs me. And I think as a matter of governance, it's something that needs to be looked at. This has been a sore subject with me for many, many years, as well as others in the City of Fountain. Anyone who lives in Colorado Springs, including Todd Evans, could sit on City Council if they chose to, and I think it's something that we need to address. The perception is real. Do you have any questions? Oh, fine.
Thank you. Yes.
Our City Council, if they live in the Springs?
No. No. If, no, they couldn't be on this City Council if they live in the Springs. Anyone who lives in Colorado Springs can sit on City Council of Colorado Springs, but they can be employed by the City of Fountain. We pay their salaries, and I think the perception is that they need to support Fountain with their governance as much as they would support Colorado Springs.
Thank you, Fran, for your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience that wanted to speak to anything? Okay, seeing no one else, we will move on to the Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately at the discretion of council. So does anyone have anything? Oop, my first button. All right, Councilmember Corey.
I'd like to request that we poll Seven H from the Consent Agenda.
Okay. Councilmember Corey has requested, and I want to let the audience know, since we do have two people with the same last name, Corey has agreed to be called Councilmember Corey so that we can keep things a little bit clearer, and especially if someone is listening to a recording. And he did approve that, though, so, yes. All righty, so Councilmember Corey has requested that we remove Item H. Anyone else? Anyone like to make a motion? Councilmember Rick?
Move to approve the Consent Agenda with the exception of Item H.
Do I hear a second? Councilmember Hinton?
A second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Please vote.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Okay, thank you very much. And that concludes Item Seven. And being no old business, we're going to move on to Item Nine A. Nine A is appointment of a mayor pro tem, and we have Ms. Huffman with that.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I have passed out a mayor pro tem poll. Those are the council members that are interested in filling the seat for pro tem. My request to you tonight is just to submit your poll back to me with your choice, and then from that point forward, I will read those choices, and then council will be required to make a motion and move on whatever decision is made. So if you wouldn't mind, please go ahead and fill out that poll and pass it down to me. I will read them aloud.
All right, so we will pause for just a moment while Ms. Huffman goes through the straw poll.
There were six answers submitted to the city clerk. Two for Councilmember Estes, two for Councilmember Applegate, and two for Councilmember Rick.
Okay.
So a motion on the floor is required to move forward on appointment of a pro tem.
Okay, there's seven people up here?
Yes.
Okay, and an option under our charter is to abstain?
From the vote. This was just a poll.
Okay. All right, thank you for that correction. Okay. So at this time, so we have a tie, a three-way tie, and we can handle it one of several ways. Ms. Huffman, do you have any ideas on how you'd like to handle that?
Actually, City Attorney Johnson, and we had this long discussion, so hopefully.
That's why I'm leaving it to the pro on this.
Well, I guess somebody didn't vote in the poll, so that would have maybe made it easier, but I think at this point, you know, the charter requires a mayor pro tem to be elected by the city council, and so I think you've got to take a motion and vote. And if that motion fails, then you, somebody makes another motion, and if that motion fails, then you take another one until we have a mayor pro tem. So that would be, that would be my suggestion, to take motions as they come, and so we've got to elect one one way or the other tonight. So that would be my recommendation, is to just take motions as they come and see who votes how.
Okay.
A motion will require obviously a motion and then a second, and then if there's no second on the motion, that motion will fail, and you can take up another motion.
Okay. Do I see anybody making a motion? Okay, I have a light on. I have one light on, so that makes it really simple to choose. Okay. Mr. Rick?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, what I suggest we do is just make a motion in alphabetical order. Mr. Applegate, Ms. Estes, and myself, we do it one at a time. Unless somebody really wants to get out there and be first, I would suggest just doing it in alphabetical order and see what happens.
Well, I appreciate that suggestion. We decline it, so would anyone like to make a motion from the floor for someone for mayor pro tem? You can make a motion for yourself. I'm sorry, Councilmember Hinton.
I motioned to approve for mayor pro tem Gordon Rick.
For Gordon Rick?
Yep.
Okay. Is there a second on the motion?
Am I allowed to second my own motion?
Yes.
It's Councilman Hinton's motion, so yes.
I second the motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor for Councilmember Rick for mayor pro tem. Please vote.
Councilmember Duncan. Is there a request for abstaining by motion and approval?
I think any abstention would be a vote in favor.
In favor?
No.
I think the charter says.
Okay, let's let the attorneys argue that, please.
I can check. I don't know that.
Request to abstain, though, I believe, requires a vote.
A request to abstain requires a vote? I'm going to have to look at the charter to verify that. So, I don't know. Off the top of my head.
Let's get it done right, so if we need to take a minute and check the city charter, let's just do that.
Mayor Thompson, at this time, may I request a recess or review?
Yes. Take a five-minute recess for review?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and start the meeting again with an explanation from the city attorney, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I've reviewed the city charter and consulted with the city clerk, and I think that what the charter says is that if a member of the council is silent on a vote, that's what counts as an affirmative vote, but if you're sort of, if you state that you're abstaining from the vote, then that counts as an abstention. And so in the current situation, Ms. Duncan has stated that she's abstaining, and so the vote will be out of six, right, in this example. And so a majority vote will need four votes still. So there's a motion and a second on the table, and I think we can go forward from there knowing what we know now.
Correct. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that clarification.
So we do have a first and a second. Motion for Councilmember Rick for pro tem. Is there a vote?
We did vote.
We did vote? Oh, is this the last one? Two yes, four no. Councilmember Rick and Hinton voting yes. Councilmember Corey, or Mayor Thompson, Councilmember Estes, and Councilmember Applegate voting no. Councilmember Duncan abstaining. Motion failed.
Okay, that motion has failed. Do I hear another motion for someone for mayor pro tem? Councilmember Corey?
I'd like to nominate Richard Applegate, Councilmember for mayor pro tem.
Okay, there's a motion for Richard Applegate for mayor pro tem. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second. Sylvia, are you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Please vote.
Three yes, three no. Councilmember Hinton, Councilmember Corey, and Councilmember Applegate voting yes. Councilmember Rick, or Mayor Thompson, and Councilmember Estes voting no, and Councilmember Duncan abstaining. Motion failed.
Okay, motion fails for a tie. We'll go for a third vote. Do I hear a motion for someone for mayor pro tem? Councilmember Rick?
I nominate Councilmember Estes.
I nominate Councilmember Estes for mayor pro tem.
Okay, we have a motion for Councilmember Estes. Do we have a second? Councilmember Estes is seconded. Sylvia, are you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, please vote. be in the plan, that will lay out how the city will address the priorities that are laid out through the next three years. Just a quick review of kind of how we got to this evening. We've had a couple of public sessions regarding the strategy. We conducted a review of the, the state of Fountain, how things are going in Fountain, how our current strategic plan has gone. We did that earlier in the year. In September, then, we met again, and we did a strategic plan work session that was open to the public, where council and the public had the opportunity to talk about the different priorities and the things that they would like to get done through the year 2024. The priorities that are in the resolution are the result of that session, and afterwards, we drafted that proposed priorities, and I have had the opportunity to sit down with each of you and go over each of those priorities in detail, answer your questions. So, this is just the, the vision statement with which you're familiar with. The council, the previous council had elected to keep the current vision statement. This is the same vision statement that is in our current strategic plan, but would ask you to consider that, again, tonight, in the resolution to reaffirm the vision statement. And then, these are the actual four priorities that have been coordinated through staff and have been coordinated with each of you individually. So, pending your questions or questions from the public, I recommend you approve the resolution and adopt your strategic priorities, which will begin in next year, in year 2022. As this year, we are finishing out, you know, our current strategy, 19 through 21. So, these are the strategic priorities of this council from 2022 through the end of 2024. Subject to your questions.
Okay, are there any questions from anyone? Councilmember Estes?
No questions. I just want to thank everybody that put all the work into this, John, everybody on council, because we got a lot of great responses back from everybody, and I really appreciate you're being able to narrow all that stuff down, because we did some pretty intense work sessions on that, and so I really wanted to say I appreciate everybody's work on this, Scott and you especially.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Can you, can you flash that back up again? Just the four strategic plans? This is just, this is so important, and I really appreciate the time staff has put into this and all the council members, and, and even when everyone was candidates, coming to the, the meetings and, and putting, giving your input on this. These priorities are really, really important, and this is where we, as a council, are gonna be moving forward on the strategic priorities. So, really take a second and look through this, make sure that, before we vote on this, is that you're comfortable with everything. I know John has been good reaching out to everybody, but this is where we really move forward as a, as a group in a city, and really show what our priorities are for the next few years. And, and there will be sub-priorities under each priority as the different departments work with them.
Yes, supporting objectives.
Supporting objectives, right. And, so if you are, but these are the overarching priorities we're gonna be, be working off of. So, if you have any questions from anyone at council, or anything you'd like to discuss, anything further? Okay, anyone from the audience have any questions on anything? Mr. Linder?
Are there any flyers on this subject here?
Mr. Linder asked if there was any flyers on it yet?
No, there are not.
But there will be, once these are adopted, correct?
Yes, we'll put this information on our website, and I'd be happy to talk to Mr. Linder or anyone else in detail about the strategic priorities, our strategic plan approach, or any other questions they have relative to the strategic plan.
Yeah, the, the current strategic plan that was adopted four years ago, it's been on the city website the whole time.
Yes, and there are copies available here in city halls.
Right, and we'll probably do the same thing with this one once it's adopted moving forward, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, does that answer your question? Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else? Mr. Lippincott, if you would come up to the microphone, please?
I just wanted to...
You got the routine down.
Tim Lippincott, 7070 Warren Spring Avenue. Am I doing that right? Would you just state a topical for each priority? If there's, if you can just say it in a word or two, each, each one of those? Yeah, I didn't, want you to go into the depth of it, although I'm interested, but just to get the topics out.
Sure. My pleasure, sir. Okay, I'll, and I've actually got the, kind of highlighted on the slides here, so we have four priorities. It's important to note that the four priorities are not in rank order, they hold equal weight, so one is not more important than the other. The first strategic priority will be essentially focused on development in the community, so setting the conditions to facilitate responsible development and carefully manage growth, and with that will come the city's task to building reasonable capacity to meet future community needs. The second strategic priority centers on the city's financial resources, developing, coordinating, and implementing initiatives and programs that diversify the city's financial resources, and there, and then invest that into the city's vision statement that's in the strategy. The third strategic priority is ensuring highly professional, responsive, and community-focused public safety resources to ensure that we have reliable access to public safety resources throughout the community. And the fourth strategic priority is improving the quality and availability of our parks and recreation opportunities across the community.
All right. Does that answer your question, Mr. Lippincott?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And, and as he stated, those will be available on the website and, and printed when, when these are adopted, and we get some more information about it. Okay, so would anybody, seeing no further questions or discussion from anyone on council, does anyone want to make a motion for this? Mayor Pro Tem Estes?
I move to adopt the strategic plan for 2022 through 2024.
Councilmember Rick?
Second.
Excuse me, goodness. All right, we have a motion and a second, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Trilch.
And the next step will be, in January, we'll bring those supporting strategic objectives to you for your consideration, and then pending your approval of those, we'll actually move forward and publish the completed strategic plan for 2022 to 2024.
Okay, so if citizens have questions?
Yes.
Here's a man that emailed.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we will move on to item 9D, Resolution 21-073, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fountain, Colorado, authorizing the leasing of two Mack trucks through Kansas State Bank and acquired with fiscal year 2021 budgeted funds. And that is Mr. Lewis. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Thompson, council members. My name is John Lewis, I'm the Finance Director for the City of Fountain, and for, for the year 2021, you approved a budget, the City Council adopted a budget on December 9th, 2020. At that time, the 2021 budget included the lease payments for two trucks for the Streets Department. Bids for this lease were received. We found that Bruckner Truck Sales had the most financially advantageous lease rate of 2.96% over a five-year period. Lease payments will be $40,604.84 per year, and then the final payment, a balloon payment of $180,000 if we decide to keep the trucks versus trading them in and, and getting new leases, and we can, we can determine that at that time based on the usage of the trucks. So, this will not require additional budgeted funds, it's already budgeted, but our policies require that you also approve the lease, so that's why I'm bringing the lease before you. So, I'm recommending that the lease be approved for these two trucks, and so, asking that you approve Resolution 21-073, and if you have any questions, that's what I'm here for.
So, I believe Bruckner Trucking is one of our new businesses in town? Yes, no?
Bruckner, yes, I believe they are here in town.
Right, right as you get off at X at 128, so fantastic, that we're supporting a new local business in town, so great. Yeah. Any questions, comments, concerns from anybody on council? Anybody in the audience? Okay, we, Councilmember Duncan?
Hi, John, I don't know if it makes any difference, but on our, on the resolution, it says 21-073, but on the, the summary, it says 21-071. If you look at the top, it says title, resolution, 21-071.
Thank you, I did read it, I read it in, yes.
21-073.
Okay.
Okay, so Troy, do I need to read that back in to get the number in correctly, or do we need to table it?
If I'm looking at it right, the resolution has the correct number, 073, and it's the commentary that's incorrect, is that right?
Yes.
If, if that's the case, then it should, it should be fine as written, that's just, the commentary is just for your reference, so your, the motion is based on the resolution.
Okay. I just want to make sure I read it in correctly, since we have two different numbers, I'm not sure which one I read in. I read in 073, thank you. Okay. Thank you for catching that. All right, do we have a motion on the, from anyone for that? Councilmember Rick?
Move to approve Resolution 21-073.
And Mayor Pro Tem Estes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, please vote. Seven yes, motion carried.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. All right, so that concludes all the old and new business that we had, so we're gonna go for correspondence, comments, and ex officio reports, and I appreciate all the council members saving their time till at the end, so we'll go through staff, and then we'll go through council members and see if we have any questions or anything. So, Scott, Scott, start with Scott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have anything new, just want to welcome the new council members.
Troy earned your money tonight.
Yeah, same, same welcome, should be, should be great, council, excited.
Chief?
Welcome, I'm glad I'm not the lawyer tonight, and everybody, welcome. Just a, a couple of events, I, I know some, some council members are up on their email and fully running, some are not, but just want to give you some situational awareness on a couple of events. Annually, we do a red and blue Santa for the Public Safety Department, and generally in years, it's supported over 500 kids and families in our community. This year, the Fountain Public Safety Department employees, and it came out of the employee's pocket, generated almost $5,000. Those will be dispersed out to all of the elementary schools, there's approximately 300 kids that we're tracking their families, we really look at Aragon and Mesa, and then we expand from there out, but we'll be delivering those presents this year. We also have an event this Wednesday at 17:30 at the Wealthy Education Center. We're scheduled to be there with the teachers and families to give some presents to kids we've identified. I'd just like to invite you all, if you'd like to come, that's this Wednesday at 17:30.
At 5:30?
Five, yeah, 5:30, sorry, went military for a minute. So, that should be a real good event, and we're looking forward to it. Thursday, we're having a public safety versus teachers' toy drive for you, if you want to come to the Fountain Middle School, you can come there and watch, probably, I don't know who's gonna lose worse, the teachers or us. I am officially retired, Todd, right? I'm not pulling a hamstring, so I think I'm gonna go out there for the ball tip, and then I'm gonna retire on the bench, probably where I belong. And then, next Monday, on the 20th of December, at 1700, 5:00, 5:00 PM, we're gonna be at the Fountain Police Department, we'll line up in some vehicles, we have a Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus, and we're just gonna do a procession like we kind of used to do in the old days and deliver about 10 presents. So, I just really wanted to invite you all to that event, we'll certainly put anyone that wants to come into either a fire vehicle or a police vehicle, and just be part of that. It's really, it's really awesome, it makes a big impact on families, you know, Todd started doing that, I just remember my first year here, we brought a component of that back, because it's really impactful that everyone gets to seize that. So, Merry Christmas, if you'd like to come and be a part of that, if you have any questions, please let me know. I just wanted to make sure, because of the emails and stuff, I didn't, I didn't miss... Uh, Bruckner, yes, I believe they are here in town.
Right, right as you get off at X at one twenty-eight, so fantastic that we're supporting a new local business in town, so great, yeah. Any questions, comments, concerns from anybody on council? Anybody in the audience? Okay, we, Councilmember Duncan?
Hi, John, I don't know if it makes any difference, but on our, on the resolution, it says twenty-one dash oh seven three, but on the summary, it says twenty-one oh seven one. If you look at the top, it says title, resolution twenty-one dash oh seven one.
Yes.
Yeah, it's twenty-one oh seven three.
Okay, so Troy, do I need to read that back in to get the number in correctly, or do we need to table it?
If I'm looking at it right, the resolution has the correct number, oh seven three, and it's the commentary that's incorrect, is that right?
Yes.
If that's the case, then it should be fine as written, that's just, the commentary is just for your reference, so the motion is based on the resolution.
Okay. Okay. Just want to make sure I read it in correctly, since we have two different numbers, I'm not sure which one I read in. I read in oh seven three, thank you, okay. Thank you for catching that. All right, do we have a motion on, from anyone for that? Councilmember Rick?
Move to approve resolution twenty-one dash oh seven three.
And Mayor Protan Estes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, please vote. Seven yes, motion carried.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. All right, so that concludes all the old and new business that we had, so we're going to go for correspondence, comments, and ex officio reports, and I appreciate all the council members saving their time till at the end, so we'll go through staff, and then we'll go through council members and see if we have any questions or anything. So Scott, start with Scott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I don't have anything new, just want to welcome the new council members.
Troy earned your money tonight.
Yeah, same, same, welcome, should be, should be great council, excited.
Chief?
Welcome, I'm glad I'm not the lawyer tonight, and everybody, welcome. Just a couple of events, I know some council members are up on their email and fully running, some are not, but just want to give you some situational awareness on a couple of events. Annually, we do a red and blue Santa for the Public Safety Department. Generally, in years, it's supported over five hundred kids and families in our community. This year, the Fountain Public Safety Department employees, and it came out of the employee's pocket, generated almost five thousand dollars. Those will be dispersed out to all of the elementary schools, there's approximately three hundred kids that we're tracking their families, we really look at Aragon and Mesa, and then we expand from there out, but we'll be delivering those presents this year. We also have an event this Wednesday at seventeen thirty at the Wealthy Education Center. We're scheduled to be there with the teachers and families to give some presents to kids we've identified, I'd just like to invite you all, if you'd like to come, that's this Wednesday at seventeen thirty.
At five thirty?
Five, yeah, five thirty, sorry, went military for a minute. So that should be a real good event, and we're looking forward to it. Thursday, we're having a public safety versus teachers' toy drive for you, if you want to come to the Fountain Middle School, you can come there and watch probably, I don't know who's going to lose worse, the teachers or us. I am officially retired, Todd, right, I'm not pulling a hamstring, so I think I'm going to go out there for the ball tip, and then I'm going to retire on the bench, probably where I belong. And then next Monday, on the twentieth of December, at seventeen hundred, five P M, we're going to be at the Fountain Police Department, we'll line up in some vehicles, we have a Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus, and we're just going to do a procession like we kind of used to do in the old days and deliver about ten presents. So I just really wanted to invite you all to that event, we'll certainly put anyone that wants to come into either a fire vehicle or a police vehicle, and just be part of that, it's really, it's really awesome, it makes a big impact on families, you know, Todd started doing that, I just remember my first year here, we brought a component of that back, because it's really impactful that everyone gets to seize that. So Merry Christmas, if you'd like to come and be a part of that, if you have any questions, please let me know. I just wanted to make sure, because of the emails and stuff, I didn't miss not inviting anybody, so thank you for your support.
I've got some basketballs and footballs rolling around the back of the car, and they have been rolling around for a while, so.
We'll take them, ma'am, thank you.
And if you're going to ride in the fire truck, don't wear high heels, wear flat shoes, and it is a very long step from, that first step is a very long step out of that vehicle. And, yeah, and the first year I got out, it was in a pothole, of course, that made the step even longer. I will not be doing that this year, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Put me in a low vehicle.
Yes, ma'am, cop car, ready to go.
Seventeen hundred for Monday?
Five P M. for Monday. Yeah, we'll depart probably around seventeen thirty. Five thirty.
Five thirty. I was, I was getting there, I'm getting better at it, okay.
Old habits die hard, I'm sorry.
Mr. Trilch.
Good evening again, mayor and council, the only other thing I have for this evening is I wanted to make an introduction. We have a new city communications specialist, Cass Cameron, if you'd please stand here, just wanted to match the name to the face, I, I sent you an email a couple of weeks ago introducing her. I know council has conveyed that you're excited to really get out there and do some great community engagement, and so Cass will be helping out with that, she's very, very experienced, coming over from K K T V as a producer from the media side, and now we're just delighted to have her with the city, so just wanted to introduce her this evening, and again, meet the name to the face, and we look forward to really getting out there and engaging with the community, thank you.
Welcome.
I'm in a Harry Potter closet, but that's all the popular cool kids are back here.
That's just, she calls it the Harry Potter closet, but that's all the popular cool kids are back there.
Wizard back there.
I'm always afraid I'm going to scare her half to death, sneaking up on her. All right, anything else from finance?
Just briefly, our auditors are here this week for the interim audit, and this is for the year end twenty twenty-one, they'll be back again in twenty twenty-two to finish up the audit. So far, things are going well.
Okay, and anything from utilities?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you, too. No updates for utilities?
No.
All right, I T.?
I have nothing this evening, Madam Mayor, welcome to all the council members, thank you.
Thank you, all right, and Ms. Sylvia?
I don't have anything tonight, welcome, just know if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me, I do the best I can to help you out.
Okay, great, Councilmember Duncan?
Okay, I do have a couple of things, a couple of pages, but I write big. The Fountain Youth Council has been very busy since the weather has been really warm, so we participated in the Fountain Festival, and they did bell ringing at the, with the Salvation Army at the Safeway here in Fountain Mesa, so they've been really busy doing a lot of things out in the community since it's been warm. I also attended the D eight board swearing-in of the new directors, that was very nice. I walked in, they had all those presents, I thought, thank you, you know, with all those presents there. I also attended the twenty twenty-one Fountain Fire Department Christmas party and awards ceremony. One of the things that I thought was so amazing is that here in Fountain, we have so many employees or firefighters that have been here for twenty-plus years, I just thought that was awesome to, you know, want to be here in Fountain that long, so I thought that was really awesome, and I really appreciate their commitment to our city. They're the best, you know, they're the best. I've been to P P C A G meetings, Board of Directors meetings, they discussed about housing across the region for our seniors, and it's a brag moment for the City of Fountain, because we were recognized for calling seniors in the area during COVID, so they thought that was really awesome, so I just want, you know, you get on calls most of the time, and, you know, when they recognized Fountain, I thought that was awesome. I also went to a traffic meeting, the interest in that meeting was because I have a teenager that is trying to enter into the driving force, and they had said something about, you know, going out into the districts, and it's really hard here in Colorado Springs to find somewhere, and most of the kids in my son's school have been going to Peabody to get driver's training, so I'm glad that they are, you know, considering the children, and, you know, that's my stake in it, is what the regulations are going to be, and what are they offering for the kids in that age group that's about to, you know, they want to ride, they want to drive. The C M L meeting that I attended also, one of the things, since we are hiring a new judge, H B twenty-one, twelve eighty, is in first form, and this bill talks about how the court resources, they want court resources, I think, seven days a week, so I don't know how that's going to affect us, but again, that's in the first form, so they will be looking into that. Let me see, Mount Carmel is going to be here on Friday, December seventeenth, at the Fountain Mesa Safeway, they did it for Thanksgiving, so they'll be doing it for Christmas. If you register to pick up a Christmas meal, you'll need your registration, your photo I D. that matches your registration, and some form of verification of your military service, like your D D two fourteen. Also, I'd just like to say, you know, the Christmas is coming up, we have Christmas events, please check on our veterans to make sure that they're okay, and our military families, you know, I have a lot of families around in my area that the spouses are not at home, so sometimes just asking if you're okay is, will help, so I'm asking that you do that, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Duncan, Councilmember Applegate?
I got nothing.
Okay, Mayor Protan Estes?
Nothing.
Okay, Councilmember Corey?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Hinton?
I don't have any business, I just have a quick comment. I look forward to serving with the members of the council, members of staff, it is an honor and privilege to serve with you as a military retiree, I've served my whole life, and so this is a great opportunity to serve and get back to the City of Fountain.
Thank you, welcome. Councilmember Rick?
Yes, for staff, with regards to Mrs. Carrick's public to be heard, I would ask somebody to reach out to her and see if we can address her concerns, and if we can't, then please feel free to get back with council to see what we want to do. Thank you.
Can I address that, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Rick, we actually, I have gotten back with her, that's how quick we are, and I want to let her know that we actually, when that came up, started looking at our own handbook, personnel handbook, not realizing it allowed for that sort of thing, and considering the sort of potential conflicts that that could create, we're looking at making some modifications to our personnel handbook for employees.
Thank you, Scott.
Are you comfortable with that? Okay, all righty, yeah, I'd like to thank a couple of council members that filled in for me this week, Mayor Protan, Mayor Protan Estes filled in for me, I had cataract surgery, so I can see out of both eyes now, and I can read the street signs again, so that's a really good thing when you're driving down the road, right? And so thank you for filling in for me at P P A C G, and Councilmember Duncan for filling in for me at C M L, thank you very much, appreciate both of you doing that. One of the big concerns that's coming out of P P C has, P P A C G has to do with matching funds, and how this is affecting our ability to do things. Matching funds are a lot of times done with nonprofits, with volunteer hours, and with COVID hitting, a lot of the boards went to members meeting at home. That is not considered matching funds, so we are going to, P P A C G, we're going to be working with our federal delegation and reaching out to other area agings and other COGS, and finding out what they're doing, because, so if a member is on a board and they drive to a meeting, they can count the time they drive from their house and the time they drive home, and the time they sit in the meeting room, that's volunteer hours. If they attend that meeting on Zoom, they get zero volunteer hours for it. So there's over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars lost to P P A C G through those matching funds through volunteer hours, and because that's a federal program, those dollars are coming through, yeah, it's really strange. We reached out at the state level first to see if there was something the state could do to help address that issue, and they said it's, those are federal dollars coming through that are requiring those funds. So I think that is something of urgent importance to our community that we need to look at, because I think the hybrid meeting, we've had greater attendance, it allows for people who, for whatever reason, you know, distance travel, sick, not feeling well, weather, to attend meetings, and that's the point we want, we want citizens involved in things in our community, and so be looking for that, and we need to be on the forefront of supporting that, because the nonprofits and different things in the area can't be losing those matching funds, and it made a huge impact in the P P A C budget this year for the one people that volunteered in the area on aging. And Purple Heart had a great celebration and invited me to come to that for their Christmas celebration, and Mr. Polsterweight was here earlier, and then earlier today, on Fort Carson, with General...
Hodney.
With a general, I can't hear you.
General Hodney.
Thank you.
Fourth Infantry Division.
Fourth Infantry Division Commander, and the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new road, that is the inside the gate part of the road for Gate nineteen, and it's beautiful, and it's smooth, and it's not rock, so if you, once you get into Gate nineteen, you have a beautiful new road to drive on, just don't have an open soda in your car when you're going up the road to Gate nineteen right now, okay? And that is part of the Mamset project, project that we're working on. And then we had a specialized transit meetings that Rosa also attended, starting on specialized transit and the needs that we have there, and the funding for that, and looking for some potential bills on that, too. So a lot of stuff going on, and I really appreciate Fountain being at the meetings and being on the forefront of a lot of this stuff, I think it's where we need to be as a community. So unless anybody else has any, anything else to say, okay? The last thing we have is the announcement of an executive session. Sylvia, do you need me to read that whole thing into the record? Or would you like to read it?
I do.
Okay.
I'd like to request an executive session pursuant to C R S Section twenty-four six dash four two four, for the purpose of review, approval, and amendment of executive session minutes, and an executive session pursuant to C R S Section twenty-four dash six dash four two four E, for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators. And then two final executive sessions pursuant to C R S Section twenty-four dash six dash four two four B, for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under two topics. Entertain a motion, please.
I will entertain a motion to go into executive session. Councilmember Rick?
Move we go into executive session.
In a second. Councilmember Hinton?
I second.
Okay, motion in second, please vote. Seven yes, motion carried. Okay, and with that, we adjourn the regular meeting, thank you, everybody, for coming, and we'll take a five-minute break while things get set up for the executive session meeting.